Call the meeting to order. Call the row.
Shawnee.
Here.
Yellen.
Here.
Back. Here. Finley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Shawnee.
Here.
Dykstra.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you.
Now, if you please stand and join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and glory forever. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Be seated. Consider a motion to move to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor, let's see. Guess we vote. Citizens' participation. Before we begin that, we have, as you all would note if you've looked at the agenda, we have a three-minute limit per person and a 12-minute per topic. It's my understanding that several of the people that are here are here to talk about the gas chamber. It's also my understanding that the Chief of Police has made the decision to remove that, and it has in fact been removed. So if that's your issue, you're certainly welcome to speak, but it's pretty much a dead issue as far as we're concerned. If you'd like to speak, approach the podium, tell us who you are, please sign in, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much. Mayor's proclamation, Fire Prevention Week.
Whereas the city of Shawnee is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas the U.S. Fire Department responded to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association, U.S. home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority, 84 percent, of all U.S. fire deaths. And whereas, in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working. Three out of five homes, home fire deaths result from fires in properties without smoke alarms, 38 percent, or with no working smoke alarms, 21 percent. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas many Americans do not know how the smoke alarms in their homes are, or how often they need to be replaced. All smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years. The age of smoke alarm can be determined by the date of its manufacture, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm, if you're tall enough to reach the ceiling. Whereas Shawnee's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Shawnee residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, don't wait, check the date, replace smoke alarms every 10 years, effectively serves to educate the public about vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years and determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of manufacture on the back of the alarm. Now therefore, I, Richard Finley, Mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by authority vested in me due hereby to claim October 9th through 15th, 2016, to be Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good. Consider a resolution to declare the two-carbon monoxide euthanasia systems, serial numbers as recorded, at the animal shelter surplus property and authorizing their disposal. Is there any discussion?
I've mentioned one thing. In writing my blank out the past years around the animal shelter, I noticed a sign there that said "Dead End." Okay? And it seemed so. I proposed at the time, after a while I got the idea, maybe we put a question mark after that "Dead End." But I think it's time we made that move ahead and put it as a dead end to that particular form. I like the word euthanasia. It sounds so peaceful, you know? And unfortunately, I know that there's been a lot of groups that have made a lot of headway in correcting and handling the animal control situation. They've done a lot of work in it, and I'm really proud of those who have been doing it. So I think it's a move ahead that we can maybe facilitate this and get back to the peace in the valley.
Would entertain a motion to...
Well, I was...
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I kinda, I can understand, you know, what you're saying and what the folks from FOSA and SPAR and other groups are saying, but is there a safety issue with our officers or whatnot? Like say if there was a mass casualty or a situation where you needed to euthanize more than one animal at a time, that a rabbit, or just something to protect our public safety?
I would think some contingency could be looked at by our police department, but...
Have we already got those in place before we get rid of the...
I didn't see, I don't see that really as being a problem. Public safety because of the lack of being able to gather these animals?
If you're gonna put a needle in a very dangerous animal, it's safer to do it with gas than it is to... I mean, if it would endanger our employees for the city, are we at risk for a lawsuit? Is what I'm asking.
It's my understanding that the Chief of Police has looked at those issues along with staff, and their recommendation is as follows.
And we're not just caving to political pressures. So I'm just saying, are we thinking it out like, I mean, we don't need to use it. We can put it out, but if there's a situation where, like, animals are very dangerous and they're risking the lives of the people that work there, shouldn't we have something as just-in-case kind of method? We don't use it every time.
This policy is falling in line with what I understand is a majority of towns and cities throughout the country as time goes by. And I, as I say, the Chief has looked at these issues, and they've talked to the vets here in town, and it's my understanding that they have alternative provisions. I satisfy them. I share your concerns about the safety issue, and as you know, I'm not inclined to bow to political pressure much, so...
Sure. And I notice you used the term "political pressure." I think it's more social pressure. Is there no politics in this? I hope there isn't, because just a lot of people has put a lot of work into trying to create this particular atmosphere that we have that will allow us to make this step. And I think we're there now.
I certainly appreciate Commissioner Dykstra's concern, and I'm sure the Chief has been looking to resolve policy issues in regard to the wild animal control and to make sure that it's a more safe process. Dogs and cats to me are entirely different. I treat them separately. I found the way that we were gassing our animals just cruel and unusual, and am relieved that we're removing those kind of things from our animal shelter. I, for one, plan on going and visiting the animal shelter to see what we are doing at the animal shelter, and I certainly encourage any of our citizens out there to do the same. But to be cognizant or aware of the fact that we certainly have guidelines that are for the animals' safekeeping and to protect the interests of that animal shelter. Thank you. I'm for this.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Would...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items, and authorizing the disposal of said items.
Call a question. Motion carries. Discussion, consideration, possible action to grant partial easement release to the state of Oklahoma, Commissioners of the Land Office, in Section 16, 10 north, range 2 east of the Indian Merity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, item five and six on your agenda are related items, and the information in your packet, including the staff memorandum and associated attachments, are the same for both of those items. So I'll summarize both of those now, and then be happy to answer any questions that you have. Number five clarifies an existing easement that the city has from the state of Oklahoma at Shawnee Lake Number One. It, the original easement dates to 1935 and is somewhat vague. It does not refer to a specific elevation, and does not clearly define the boundaries of the lake. And consequently, that complicates the actions that the state is currently taking to offer those lots that they have currently under lease to lake residents out there. The actions that they're currently taking to actually transfer those leases so that an individual can hold clear and full title to the property. And because of the blanket easement that currently exists, there are some title concerns. And so what number five includes is, if approved, it would modify the easement, releasing that blanket clause and setting the easement elevation to 1077.3, which is the FEMA base flood elevation. So that fully protects the city's interest and lake boundary. Just as a reminder, the overflow, the bank full elevation at the dam is 1075. So additional 2.3 feet provide room for storage when there's heavy rains and inundation, and that is a scientifically established FEMA line. So staff does recommend approval of number five. With respect to number six, number six is also related to the overarching proposal from the state, which is again to transfer these lake lots from state ownership to individual ownership. And in doing so, we've come across a situation with one of the lake lots where it's actually split, where there's a residence that is on state land, and then the remaining property is on city property. And so you might recall that the city of Shawnee owns the majority of the property around the lake. However, there is a section that's owned by the state of Oklahoma, and where those two lines converge, there is one lease in particular that is impacted by this action. And what number six contemplates is that the city will deed over .31 acres in exchange for an easement that we need in another part of the city. And those two actions are of equal value, and the city would have had to purchase that easement separately if we wanted to utilize that as a separate action. And so what this will do is solve this unique situation for this property owner, allow them to go through the process with the state and obtain clear title to their property. And it also benefits the city via this additional, this easement that we need to extend sewer north of I-40 to West Tech Road, which would facilitate commercial residential development and also facilitate use of our 160 acres that was purchased several years ago for our park site. So it's kind of a critical easement that we currently do not have. There is no budgetary impact associated with either of these items. The city receives no monetary compensation at present from any of these lake leases. The individuals pay the state directly. So this action or these actions do not have any impact. As I mentioned, this easement that we would be receiving, we would have had to have paid for in the future when we decided to extend the sewer. So in that sense, we are saving money long-term as part of this process. Included in your packet is a variety of exhibits that kind of clarify the situation there, and also some figures with aerial photography. For those of you that may be a little less familiar with the lake or the lakes, you can, hopefully, we're able to clearly identify the scope of the property that we're talking about. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Justin, what kind of, I mean, I saw what you had sent out evidently, but are we losing any long-term value to the city over this type of action with us giving up that near the lake?
I don't believe we are, because we actually probably have less control under state ownership, because they have certain sovereignty inherent in state land. And so actually, when these lands transferred to private ownership, we probably have even more control that we could exercise through our traditional means such as zoning or other ways. And so I don't believe that there's any negative impact to the city or to taxpayers by these actions.
So we would have no liability in regard to any incidents that may occur out there in the future? Is that my understanding?
No, ma'am. That is my understanding as well, yes.
So there's actually no negative aspects that you can find out of this? And the facts are that it does lead itself towards more than just the 160-acre park. You look at other types of developments that could come with this action.
Yes, sir. I think, you know, probably the only, you know, potential risk that I see, and I don't even know that risk is the right word, but we'll have 40 or 45 state lots, and then we've got, which is the current status quo, and so there's no new lots created, but this action would just simply allow for the private ownership. And then we have the remaining lease lots out there, which number about 150 or 60, that are on city property. And so in that sense, we'll have, now we'll have, instead of two owners, the city and the state, we're gonna have really three owners, the city, the state, for any lands that they don't transfer, and then, say, you know, 30 or so private owners of those lots. So a few more owners, and then some, almost kind of a different class of owner where you've got someone on a city lot that's going to have to go through a lease currently, because we don't have an option or provision to allow for the sale, and then those that have other options. But I don't really see a way to avoid that.
Do they have all the municipal services to them right now, like water and all that?
They are in city limits, but because they are rural, they, city water and sewer is not available, so it's septic and wells. Yes, sir.
Okay, so there wasn't any kind of easements on that at all from the state to city transfer anything? Like any of our, we're not losing any of that stuff, any of our infrastructure?
No, sir. We're not losing, these lots are already accessed through, you know, roadways that we maintain or that are privately maintained, and the status quo will remain, whichever the case. So there's no additional expenses associated.
Is my understanding as to item five specifically, we're simply an accommodating party to a transaction between the CLO and the landowners?
Yes, sir.
As to six, there's an actual exchange?
As to six, there is an actual exchange. We will be deeding property in exchange for an easement.
And has any of the owners voiced any type of concern over this kind of transaction occurring?
Not to me directly. I know that they've been working with the land commission and working with, they've hired private legal counsel to help them through the process, and so there's, I have been aware of this process for at least the last year. So this is, this has been a process, and I certainly, I'm sure they had many questions and perhaps some concerns about the process that they've conveyed to the state, but I, to me personally, about any city concerns, no, ma'am.
The state currently owns no water rights to that, to City of Shawnee Lake?
That's correct. That's correct.
On the shoreline, it doesn't, none of that will go to the owner, or go to the other, the current property owner?
The, so the properties are already platted lots, so the properties already exist in space, if you will, and so nothing about the lot dimensions is changing. The easement that we will continue to have covers up to the FEMA flood plain level, a base flood elevation, which encompasses the lake, whether or not it's full or above, or above normal pool level. So, no, sir, there's no conveyance of water rights.
Okay, but we will have control over the, like, the buildings and everything else that they're doing out there?
Yes, it's fully in city limits, so they, you have to comply with all building code requirements, all zoning code requirements. Yes, sir.
Would entertain a motion as to item five? Second. Motion carries. Would entertain a motion as to item six?
So moved.
Second. Call a question. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Consider bids, requests, qualifications, RFQ for park design, RFQ. Call the item. James here?
James, go ahead.
All right, what you have is a list of firms that submitted their qualifications. There's no cost associated with this at this time. Our staff will review the submittals and choose the firm we think is qualified. When a firm is chosen, staff will come back before the commission and ask to begin negotiations for a contract.
So there's currently no bids?
There's currently no bids, no.
Just a follow-up, Commissioner Dykstra. The reason there's no bids is because it's a professional service, and so it's a request for qualifications. So we're gonna evaluate these proposals, see who we feel is the most qualified based on the work that we envision, and then we'll come back to this body for authority to negotiate with that firm. And so, and then when that negotiation's complete, we'll come back with an item that you would specifically approve with the...
Will this be like a design-build project, or will it be...
No, it will not be a design-build. This will be consulting services that will provide us with design and cost estimates for park improvements at several park facilities.
Okay, so project management throughout, or are we gonna do that in-house?
This will be no construction management. This is the conceptual design and cost estimates so that we can have the information we need to move forward with the actual construction improvements.
Okay, like architects?
Yes, sir.
So do we just table it?
No actions needed.
No action needed.
We want to see, Mr. Mayor, we'll talk about Fire Prevention Week. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and talk about Fire Prevention Week. I appreciate the proclamation, Mayor, and the proclamation you covered very well, some of the things I was gonna talk about, so, but I, to expand on some of those things, some of the statistics, I do want to make sure that it stress again what you said about smoke alarms, that that's really something we're trying to stress this year to make sure people understand, not just to have a good battery, but make sure that if you have a smoke alarm that's more than 10 years old, it needs to be replaced. If you're not sure about that, citizens of Shawnee, please call the fire department, and we'll be happy to come out. We'd be more than happy to come out and check it. We actually are lucky enough in Shawnee to have a couple of vendors that have donated smoke detectors, so we have some, and we'll come out and put them up for you. The guys are trained in putting them up in the right places, and so I just want to stress that, that citizens are always more than welcome to please call us, and we'll come out and check your smoke detector, replace your battery, or put a new one up. Some of the things I wanted to talk about, Fire Prevention Week, some of the stuff we're doing this year is Shawnee Fire Department. And actually, Fire Prevention Week is not till next week nationwide, but we're gonna kind of make a two-week program out of it this year. Our Clowns have already started their annual Shawnee Fire Clown program, and I'm sure most of you are probably familiar with that program. If you haven't seen it, I would really encourage you to get out and see one this year. They do a great job. They've done three schools today. Just today, they've already been in front of 468 children in Shawnee. By the end of the week, it'll be over a couple thousand that they'll make their program, present their program to. I gotta brag on these guys, they put a lot of work into it. They've been working on it for weeks. It's something they study, they go out, and Fire Clowns are something that's done nationwide. But I'll tell you, you have, in Shawnee, we have one of the oldest in the state and by far the best clown program in the state of Oklahoma. So it's really something that we're proud of, our guys, it's a passion for them. We have guys that have been, it's been passed down for generations. We've been doing it for close to 25 years now in Shawnee. They do a great job of keeping the children's attention by keeping them entertained, but also making sure that we reinforce the fire and life safety aspects of, that they're trying to get across to them. So couldn't brag on them enough.
You can sure say they love doing it.
They do. They really do. They really do. They're, it's a passion for them, and we've got, we're lucky to have a lot of guys that really, that are really good at it, too. So I really encourage you, I sent out the schedule, and I'll send it out again this week. Would encourage the citizens, too, if they can make, we do one program every week, and Thursday evening will be the community program that everybody's invited to. It'll be at Shawnee Middle School at 7:00 PM on Thursday night. So we invite the entire community to come out, and that'll be one that anybody can come to. So we encourage you to come to that one if you can. Excuse me, just wanted to kind of mention some of the things. They'll do 18 shows this week, they've got 18 shows scheduled, and they go from school to school, so it's quite a deal. They set up, tear down, and it's quite an event. So that, we have the clown program going on, and again, I wanted to just brag on those guys. We're also gonna do some other things this year. In addition to the clown program, that will be going on all this week, where this Saturday, coming Saturday, October 8th, we're going to partner with the Red Cross here in Shawnee. Very lucky to have them, they have access to a mass amount of smoke detectors, and we're gonna continue our blanket coverage of Shawnee going door-to-door in offering smoke detector installation. We started this back in February. We did a Saturday in February, we did about 350 installations that day, partnering with the Red Cross. They go out with us. Our guys do the installations, and the Red Cross gets all the paperwork, they fill out all the information, and kind of give some people, give the homeowners some fire and life safety tips. So we're very appreciative of them. They're bringing the smoke detectors, we're bringing the manpower, and we're gonna partner up. And we're hoping to this Saturday, October 8th, we're gonna start where we left off on the southeast part of town, working our way back west, and we're hoping to install 1,000 smoke detectors this Saturday. So we're very excited about that program and making an aggressive goal there, but we're hoping to get that done. So we're very excited about that, and we're just gonna try to continue that on. That program, we feel like is very beneficial. There's really not much more, nothing more beneficial than having a working smoke detector in your home to, as was very mentioned, mentioned very well in the proclamation. Couple other things I wanted to mention next week, another new thing that we're gonna do, we've never done this before, but we're gonna have next Thursday from 2:00 to 7:00 PM here at Station 1, City Hall, on the west end of City Hall, October 13th, we're going to have a open house slash fire and life safety education opportunity. And we invite the citizens, invite the community to come down, see your fire station, and also city employees, we're gonna encourage them to come down, too, and do some training. We're gonna, some things we're gonna try to simulate down there are potential kitchen fires. That's one of our biggest issues. We have a lot of kitchen fires in Shawnee, so we're trying to attack that, and we want to train people on what to look for, how to avoid those type of fires. Some of the other things we're gonna do some training on is smoke detectors, of course, extension cords, that's another one, extension cords and space heaters are a big one. So that's some more things. And then also having a good home escape plan. That's one of the things the guys always, the clowns always stress every year to the children, but we want to also hit the adults, too, because sometimes the children hear it every year, but maybe the adults don't hear it very often. So we want to offer that to them as well. So again, that's gonna be next Thursday, October 13th, and we're gonna run that from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. And the Red Cross is actually gonna come down to that, too, and they're gonna be there as well. So very excited about that. So, very excited about that. Also, our Fire Marshal, David Anderson, Deputy Fire Marshal, next week, will be doing some fire and life safety talks, presentations at places here in town. Tuesday, they're going to do a talk with Project Heart on the South Side Community Center at lunch, they'll be down there speaking there. And on Wednesday, they're going to speak at the Senior Center around lunchtime as well, and just give, again, fire and life safety tips to people that are in attendance that day. And we're going to wrap everything up Saturday, October 15th. We have, next week, we have several of our members going through car seat, child car seat installation training. That's a certification now that a lot of our firefighters are getting, and that's something you really, it's more technical than I ever realized, making sure that those things are installed correctly. A few years ago, we started sending people that class, and we've got several members going through that class next week. So, next Saturday, October 15th, not this coming Saturday, but the following Saturday, we're going to, at Station 3, we're going to have a car seat safety check. Those guys will have graduated their class, and we do this fairly often. We'll have, we'll open up to citizens to come through, and we actually pull them through the fire station, almost kind of like an oil change place or something, that we pull them through, and check their car seat for them, make sure everything's installed correctly, and then they come on out the south side of the station. So, that's going to be Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 to noon. So, I'll be sending out emails and reaching out to local media on that and everything, but I just wanted to mention some of those things. And again, thanks for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thanks to your guys, and we appreciate that they like to participate in the fun part of what is otherwise a very dangerous job.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you very much. We're very lucky, we have a good group, good group of firefighters, so appreciate it.
Chief?
Yes.
One thing, the contact number they can reach you for if they want to sign up for a fire, a smoke alarm?
Yes, thank you for asking. Eight seven eight sixteen seventy-one, that is the number to our Fire Department Secretary, Clarice Brock. That's the best number to call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I presume you're going to have this in the newspaper regarding each of these things?
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you.
City manager's report.
My report is in your packet. I'm going to deviate slightly and come back to report, be happy to answer any questions that you have, but the report's pretty basic this month, just a general update on different projects. I think you're pretty much familiar with most everything in there. So, what I'd like to do with my limited time is recognize a few employees for some outstanding work that they've done the last month or so. The first of those is Captain Scott Kilgore with the Shawnee Fire Department. In late August, Mr. Kilgore was off duty and spending time with his family at Asylum Springs Kayak Park in Arkansas, when he actually had to jump into action and to save a six-year-old girl that was swept up in the current. And Mr. Kilgore coordinated, his day job as firefighter is also, he also coordinates the Department Swiftwater Rescue Team, so he was the right man for the job in the right time there. And so, wanted to recognize his outstanding effort even away from the community. Another employee I'd like to recognize is Christina Brown, she's our Emergency Communication Manager. She was nominated and actually won the Oklahoma Public Safety Telecommunicator of the Year Award. It's a very distinguished award, she's going to be recognized tomorrow night in Oklahoma City at the Oklahoma Public Safety Conference. And so, she was awarded that from the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials and the National Emergency Number Association. So, wanted to congratulate Ms. Brown for that award in a more public manner. And lastly, last Wednesday, September 28th, Sergeant George Stafford and Officer Robert Barton of the Shawnee Police Department were instrumental, along with other assistance that was received from the evening shift officers and dispatchers, they were instrumental in stopping an individual from jumping at the overpass on Highway 177 and Farrell. And their communication skills led to the best possible outcome for that individual and for all involved. So, wanted to recognize those four individuals, and they're just a handful of examples of the kind of caliber of employees that we have here at the city, and that we're just blessed with that level of dedication. So, appreciate you allowing me to deviate, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the city manager report or any status updates on projects. Thank you.
I think we should give a hand to all those folks that you just talked about.
Is there any new business?
Yes, sir, any business?
Commissioners comments?
I'd like to say, we went out to the airshow Saturday, great event, hopefully that continues and we can make that even bigger event, it was great. Chief Tisher, I wanted to commend your guys. I know you had a rig out there for safety. They set up at the end of the runway at 11:30, but prior to that, they had it on display with two firefighters, and they did a fantastic job with people, kids, showing them the rig and just, you had two very good guys there, and I think it was probably one of the more popular attractions at that event at the time. So, thank you for doing that, it was great, and the airshow was fun. If you haven't been to it, next year, everyone should really attend, try to attend that.
Don't miss it.
I'd like to express thanks for the One Safe Place, the article written recently about their work and their efforts in regard to helping victims, I think is noteworthy. I believe Mayor Finley has indicated that he's going to look at options and opportunities with the city manager in regard to assisting with development or build-out or looking at opportunities for this particular project. And I know right now, the First Christian Church here in Shawnee is helping that effort, and I certainly appreciate that you've extended that opportunity for that program to be within your facility.
That's good. I'd just like to remind citizens to be weather-aware tomorrow, it looks like we're going to have a rough storm coming in, and also be listening for any kind of updates from, like sirens or whatnot. If you hear it, take cover, and yeah, keep up the good work, city.
My comments, number one, to the commissioners, we'll be scheduling a retreat sometime in the next eight to twelve weeks. So, be thinking about things you want to talk about and your personal agendas that you each have to move the city forward. And the same goes to our residents and the staff, if there are things that you all would like to get on the agenda, I consider that a safe place to come with ideas, and so feel free to present them. Last week, I went to Albert Lee, Minnesota with Avidus to visit their Blue Zones project. If you are not aware of what Blue Zones does, they have a good website, and you can go look at it. They will be back in town, I believe, on the 11th with presentations, and I know the commissioners will all, either will or have received invites to that. Those are things that you'll be duly impressed with. They showed us around town, and it's an impressive, it's an impressive program. So, it's one that we'll be looking at as we go forward. Good Sam's is here this week, this RV group, and they've been coming here for 20 years. They're great folks, and if you've seen them around town, speak to them and be friendly. Now, I have one comment to the staff, it's, the nature of improvement starts with the dissatisfaction of where we are, and sometimes I personally come across as being critical. Please be advised that those statements are not critical, they're just my observations of where we need to go from where we are. So, with that having said, we are adjourned. Call the meeting of the Shawnee Airport Authority to order? Call a roll. Do we have to call a roll? Since we already did. Okay. Consider approval of consent agenda, would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion carries. Item two, discussion, consideration of possible action on entering into a memorandum of understanding with Shawnee Industrial Authority in order to finance the construction of 10-unit tee hangar facility. Thank you, Keenan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I just kind of want to piggyback on Commissioner Rutherford's comments on the airshow. I just real quick, just wanted to thank all the people that were involved in that, all the city departments and all the organizations that volunteered for that, and it was a really good, really good show, one of the best attended shows that we've had in recent years. And if you weren't there, you definitely probably heard it around town, and you're right, Chief Tisher probably stole some of the thunder of the other displays, but that's all good. The agenda item before you, this is a memorandum of understanding between the airport and the Shawnee Industrial Authority. This document pretty much just expresses the Shawnee Airport, Shawnee Industrial Authority's commitment to the airport, commitment to loan the airport, rather, $350,000 for the purpose of building a 10 tee hangar facility on the airport. Now, keep this in mind, this agreement is not the official loan agreement, per se. What this MOU does is it expresses the commitment of the SIA to the project, and it gives the airport just the confidence beginning, early phases of the total project in itself, and just knowing that we'll actually have somebody to finance the tee hangers makes it a little bit easier. It's kind of difficult for the airport to get a conventional loan from a traditional financial institution such as a bank or credit union for federal law reasons that I won't get into, but so this is kind of a nice way to get some financial backing to actually build structures, because you can't get grant money to build hangers and things like that. But keep in mind, we still have to construct a new taxiway and a new apron before we build the hangers, and that project will require a large contribution from the FAA and some smaller contributions from the airport and the city. The MOU, that's on the agenda, it's not a 100% binding contract, and what I mean by that is that any loan agreement is contingent on approval, of course, the city commissioners, and the approval of grants from the FAA. You know, attached to your packet, excuse me, attached to your packet is kind of a fact sheet that spells out the elements of the entire project, including a schedule of construction and shows which partners are involved and which costs. Now, some of the commissioners have seen that fact sheet time and again, but for the new ones, it's a good reference to kind of show each phase of the project, and the final phase, of course, is to build the hangers, which we get the financing. The memorandum of understanding, it does spell out some key elements of what a future loan contract would look like. It'd be a 12-year long-term, annual payments to the Industrial Authority with revenue from the new hangers that would be built. City of Shawnee would have to guarantee the loan, and what you won't find on there is actually an interest rate. And we thought it was kind of necessary to determine the interest rate at a later date, just to kind of assure the Industrial Authority receives an interest rate that kind of reflects current markets once we enter that loan agreement in a couple of years. Something that's going to be reasonable for the airport, and is similar to an interest rate the city would qualify for. So, we'll kind of cross that bridge when we get there. The airport advisory board did recommend approving this memorandum of understanding at the September Airport Board Meeting, and city staff does recommend adopting the memorandum. So, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
You had mentioned that we have a backlog of this use for this type of buildings, and you feel pretty much that the, they will be people playing very quickly and also pay pretty much for this, for the term of that, and not actually cost the city much additionally.
Right. I think if there's going to be any vacancies, it's going to be probably for a short amount of time. Like you said, we have a pretty long waiting list, and filling those 10 tee hangers, I think we could fill up pretty fast.
Certainly after seeing that show, I have been out the airport recently, and I was very impressed, and I think that we had quite a crowd out there. Everybody seemed to be having a great time, and you guys put on a real show, and I appreciated it very much.
Is the other, sorry, are the other construction projects, how are they doing? Like the driveway or the parking lot that we were redoing and then the?
We are the, are you talking about maybe the taxiway and apron that we'd have to build prior to the hangers, or the?
Right, yeah, I think that we approved it like four or five months ago.
Oh, this was, the most current projects that we just did, we had, oh, right, we did the apron hard stand, which was just a concrete area for large jets to park on. Yeah, that is complete.
Okay.
And the federal-funded projects, beacon and all that are complete. And the only other?
This is for the thing that talks to the airplanes, right?
That would be the weather station as well. Yeah, we've got a brand-new AWAS, Automated Weather Observing Service. All that is complete, and the closeout documents have been filed, and we've received all the federal reimbursements and state reimbursements, so yeah.
Was there any legal language that was of a concern to us at the city on this particular action that you noted?
Keenan, this is the same agreement we looked at quite a while ago.
Quite a while ago, yeah. It's been a long time since we've been making.
It's been a while since I reviewed it, but no, at that time I approved it, I didn't have any concerns. Again, it's more of an expression of intent than a binding legal contract at this point. It says that you can, that you have permission to go and do this.
Right, that the Industrial Authority will do this when the time comes, so it's, they're very supportive of this project, and they're very excited about this, and I anticipate that they'll continue to support this when we're ready to build, pending your approval.
Well, I for one think this is a great opportunity, and appreciate the work that you put behind it, you and the city manager. So, I make a motion to approve this MOU as is written.
Second. Call a question.
Second, please.
Bushon. Any new business?
No, sir.
Meeting is adjourned. Call to order the meeting of the Shawnee Municipal Authority. We have a quorum. Would consider a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Call a question. Motion carries. New business?
There's no new business, sir.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.